Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody. This is the Board Commissioners Meeting for Porter County, February 13th, 2018. Welcome, everybody, to the meeting. We've been very busy up here the last couple of weeks. We have a pretty full agenda today, a lot of action items that we're excited about. So let's go right into the meeting. With that, we will go into a consent agenda, which consists of approval of payroll for February 9th, 2018, approval of claims for February 1st and February 8th, 2018, waits and measures report, December 16th, 2017, and January 15th, 2018. And also on file for the consent agenda is the comp time report for the county's monthly comp time report. With that, well, we can do the Memorial Opera House. Do we do that? We can't. We can do it all at once. With that now, we have a bunch of contracts for the Memorial Opera House. Scott McDonald, director. This is for the Hunchback Notre Dame show. And with that, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Blaney to read the names, because I'll probably lose my voice.
That's embarrassing myself.
Yeah. Delegation is good.
You know, seeing this low man on the totem pole.
Jim? He got me last meeting. I like being the underdog.
Jen London, artistic services agreement. Bob Cooley, artistic services agreement. Bobby Sue Kavatchkov, artistic services agreement. Michelle Coburg, Phil Luth, Jen Nelson, Julie Plant, Cara Jackson, all artistic services agreements. Caitlin Leonard White, Kristen Luth, Kyle Lidkey, Larry Meskai, Lena Levi, Louis Stahl, Linnea Besset, Mike Bernstein, Stephanie Reader, Timothy Slatton, Tom Reed, and William Woods, all artistic services agreements. Bobby Sue Kavatchkov, artistic services agreement, The Limelight. Jen London, artistic services agreement, The Limelight. Aaron Kessler, artistic services agreement, promotional videographer. Lisa Woodruff Hadine, artistic services agreement, Lunchtime Cabaret. Brightside Music LLC, venue rental agreement. A request to purchase the production of Disney's Alice in Wonderland from Music Theater International in the amount of $990. And a request for an additional appropriation, fund number 4915, MOH managed to account number 3340, advertising. These are monthly dollars received from Indiana Dunes Tourism to be used for marketing and advertising.
Thank you, Laura. Any questions or any comments from the board? Scott, when is the Hunchback of Notre Dame again?
We open up Friday evening.
This Friday? Okay, so, yep, good. And your tickets are trending real well?
Yes, yes. Actually, we have already won broken even, and so everything is great from here on in.
Good. Good. Looking forward to it.
And the 15th is the-
15th is the ribbon cutting, and we also have a preview that night for theater for the audience. We have kids from Free to Reduce Lunch, opportunity to prices, both housing opportunities coming to see the show, that way they can see it otherwise.
Good. That's awesome.
And the ribbon cutting for-
Yeah, ribbon cutting, that's for 30 till 6:00.
Do you want to explain what it's for?
Sure, sure. So that is, do you want to come up there?
No, you can.
Okay. So if the Chamber of Commerce is doing a ribbon cutting for 125th anniversary, business after hours as well, we have about 175 RCTs so far. And we will have food from Peria, and as well from our, and a preview of Hunchback as well, being cast recording a couple of numbers for that. So they will have the opportunity to see that, see all the new changes that have been made at the Opera House as far as the paint job and new winter treatments and new brands. So a really great way to kick off our 125th year.
Great.
Great. Thanks, Scott. We have that all open on the floor for the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second for the consent agenda for the February 13th Board Commissioners Meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We're going to move into announcements right now. We really only have one. This is sort of a follow-up announcement from our last meeting. I think everybody that lives here knows the weather has been quite the tiger here the last three to four weeks. We have a thaw coming up here, it looks like, in the future again. And we're going to be flirting with disaster again on our roads. The last time, we had the big freeze and the thaw, and we talked about how our roads were sort of moving around a little bit. It's not a good place to be. And we're sort of back at that same place again, three weeks later. So we're just letting everybody know that we're concerned. We've been talking to the council. I think you're going to see later in the meeting here, there's something from the Highway Department for some overtime, because the other thing about this snow that's been going on, it's always been at night. And it's always been on a weekend. It could never be during the day or during the weekdays. So a lot of different things are hitting us from a lot of different directions, but we're managing it. But we just want to make another announcement again, that we're watching our roads and we're very concerned. And as the thaw comes forward, we're going to be, it's going to also create some drainage issues, because things will drain real fast, too, when it gets warm like that. So now we go from soft roads to drainage issues. So we have our hands full up here. We're ready to handle it. But we just want to acknowledge it and let everybody know that we're managing it the best we can. Also, we've had some comments. At this time of year, we tend to get people calling, wanting us to plow private roads, wanting us to plow everything. And that's sort of been a hand-to-hand combat type of thing we've been working through. But that problem still exists out there, and we're still dealing with it. So it's a lot going on up here right now, and a lot to be managing. But I feel very confident that we have the right people and systems in place to handle it. The other thing I'd like to also pre-warn or pre-tell, so to speak, is that I think we'll be talking with the Highway Department. Definitely, we'll be doing frost laws this year. You know, we might even want to start taking a look at it even a little bit earlier than we normally do. And I know that's something we need to get out to our building community, letting them know that this could be coming. So as they're planning foundations and things for the spring, they know that there could be some periods of time there where they can't get concrete trucks to their rural roads. So we need to be a little more proactive on that, Bob and Andy. And let's put a plan together for that, to make sure we communicate to our building family out there that, you know, because when we've had to put it on last minute to a lot of them, they don't like that. But I think we need to let them know that the conditions are right for this to happen, so just expect it. And if we get by it without having to do it, well, then so be it. But I'd rather try to be out ahead of it than try to follow it. So anything else you guys would like to add on the announcements?
Yeah, I mean, I think I can speak for all three of us, Andy, saying that we appreciate all the work that your plow drivers have done in the last couple of weeks. I think they had nine days in a row, right, of 12 to 14-hour days. And it's much appreciated. The roads were great.
And they have people yelling and screaming at them. They have people getting out in the middle of the roads, trying to stop them, so they don't plow their dry道way in. They got all kinds of crazy things going on out there. But that's part of the, that's part of the deal. But the guys are handling it. And I just-
And we have a lot of your drivers.
815 miles of roads, folks. That's how much we got to take care of with 38 trucks.
That's One Direction.
That's One Direction, right. So, you know, it's a big task. But Andy, let the guys know, thank you, and keep plugging away. And it's, we're thinking of them out there. So that's all I had to say about that. Now we'll move into the commissioners' business here. We have a board appointment to the Westchester Public Library Board of Trustees.
I'd like to recommend Randy Whitman for reappointment to the library board in Westchester.
Second. We have a motion and a second for Randy Whitman to be the board appointment for the Westchester Public Library Board of Trustees. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We're now going to move to the revision to Stormwater Advisory Board Ordinance Number 16-03, Number 16-03. And this is second reading. Correct. Yeah. Any comments or questions from the board members?
And just again, the only change in this was, this is a Stormwater Advisory Board, and it's a member from the Board of Commissioners membership, and what we've added is "for their designee." That's the only amendment to this portion of the Stormwater Advisory Board Ordinance.
Motion to approve on second reading.
Second. We have a motion and a second for the revision to Stormwater Advisory Board Ordinance Number 16-03. This is second reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now we're going to move to Civic Plus. This is an agreement amendment. Do we have, is Kurt going to, I can do this. You want to go ahead and tell us?
So this is for the text message subscribers. It's increasing our agreement with Civics Plus up to an additional 500 people that can sign up for that. And then the amendment would be an additional $900 annually through our yearly contract with Civics Plus, to be invoiced December 1st of each year.
Any questions of the board?
No. Motion to approve. I'm glad people are signing up for this.
Yep. We have a motion and a second for Civic Plus amended agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next up, we got Garrett Construction. This is for draw number, pay application number four, in the amount of $79,661.97 for the renovation of the admin plaza. Any questions from the board? Comments?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second.
Looks like the ramp-
Yeah, I was just reading. I was looking. Yeah, okay, that's the number. So we still have $205,000 to go yet, on balance, to finish on building. So we have a motion and a second for payoff number four, in the amount of $79,661.97. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next up is Skilman Contract. I'd like to have Scott Cherry, who's representing Skilman, to come before us. Hi, Scott.
Good morning.
If you recall, I think at our last meeting, or was it the meeting before?
Meeting before.
The meeting before, the last meeting. We approved a proposal from Skilman Corporation to assist the Board of Commissioners in the project, the capital improvement plan. They will be our construction manager, owner's representative for the county. And we're very, we're very happy to have entered into a proposal with Skilman. This now, to the board members, is the actual contract that came out of the proposal from Skilman. So now we are acting on the contract. So that's what this is before you. Are there any questions of Scott or anybody here that has any questions? I can tell you, having worked a long time in the construction business, how we're going about this capital improvement plan is the right way. We've already seen some benefits by having Skilman with us as we're working through this project. So with that, I would like to make the motion to approve Skilman's contract. I'll make the motion. We have a motion and a second to approve the Skilman contract for the capital improvement plan. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. You are now officially with us, even though you've been working with us, so, in another capacity. Next, we have on the agreement, and we'll let, we'll let, we'll turn it over to Scott here, Scott Cherry. We have the Shive Hatterley. This is the agreement for the Porter County Expo Center renovation project. Once again, we approved a proposal in our last meeting. And then after we went through the proposal, we worked through all the details on the contract. And now that is what is before us today. So Scott, you want to give us a heads up on this?
Right. As Mr. Good mentioned, the agreement is consistent with the proposals that were submitted, the schedule that we're looking to start this work. We're looking at August, beginning the construction. We obviously have to wait till after the fair. We'd look to receive bids in late June, and so we can start that work in August. And again, it's consistent with what was proposed and the schedule. So it's my recommendation that you approve that contract.
Okay. Any questions from the board of Scott? Cherry? Too many Scots over here. No comments, no questions?
Not me.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for the agreement for the Porter County Expo Center renovation project with Shive Hatterley, based out of Alpharezzo, Indiana. All of those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Lori Daley couldn't be here today, but she's going to be happy to know this is done.
Yep. And next, we have the second agreement with Shive Hatterley.
Same thing with the courthouse work. That work's going to consist of an envelope package, replacing windows and doing some exterior improvements. And then we'll go into the inside of the building and take care of some priorities in there, such as restroom renovation and some other things that we come up with. That, again, is consistent with what their proposal is. We'll look for that envelope package to come out in, hopefully, late May, June, get started on the outside, order windows and things like that, so we can take advantage of the good weather months. And then the renovation package will follow that afterwards. And we can have time to coordinate how that work's going to happen. So it's my recommendation that we sign that contract and move forward.
Any comments or questions from the board? The contract amount for Shive Hatterley on this proposal is $265,200, same as the proposal. Scott, I also wanted to let you know, too, that the city of Alpharezzo has approached us. And I think we want to probably get a meeting with them pretty soon, because they're doing some extensive work around the courthouse this year. And we need to probably dovetail it into some of the stuff we're doing on the east side of the building. So we probably need to get a meeting with them.
I think that meeting is, if it isn't set up, it's being set up. We're, that's brought to our attention, so that's-
Good, good.
-to seize that opportunity.
Yeah. And I want to also talk to you, if we go to the meeting or whatever, we'll give instructions on the Lincoln Way side, because there's some things going on there, too, so we can see what they have, what they want to do there. So just wanted to give this opportunity to say that. So we have a motion and a second, right? Or did we get a motion?
No, we don't have a-
We don't have a motion and a second yet. I'm opening up the floor.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second for Shive Hatterley. This is agreement for the Porter County Courthouse renovation project. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now we're off, that's it, Scott. I think we got you.
Structure point.
Structure point.
Oh. I'm moving stuff around. Next on the list is American Structure Point. This is the proposal for the North County Courthouse and surveying services, correct?
Correct.
Because we got a lot of site work to do up there. So take us through it.
Correct. You have two proposals that we're seeking your approval on. The first one is for all the mechanical, I'm sorry, architectural, structural, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, civil, and even the landscape work for the additions and renovations at the north annex located in Portage. We're looking at two packages there, one to get started with the additions and the site work, and look to bid that in August to start late fall here, early fall. The other proposal that you have is for the survey and location work. It includes the topographic survey. It includes the location of the private utilities on the property. Common to have that work done with the civil portion. So it makes sense to do both of those proposals. So it's my recommendation that you accept those proposals, and they can follow up with a contract similar to what we get.
So again, for the board, this is a proposal only that will move us to the contractual stage. So we'll be voting on this, a contract, if we move on this today. So just wanted to be clear. Any comments or questions?
Glad to be moving.
Yep.
Yep. I just want to add, the second package of that will be bid later in December. That will be with the renovations on the inside and build out of the exterior. So it allows us to get moving, take advantage this year with some of the work.
Get the shell up. Lot of site work to do up there, too. All right, we have a motion and a second. And a second to approve the American Structure Point proposal for the North County Courthouse and Surveying. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for all your help.
Sure, we'll be seeing you at many meetings to come. Next up is timekeeping policy.
So the last meeting, we dove into the timekeeping policy, kind of the general version. And we requested comments from our department heads and our different offices. As we went through and making the timekeeping policy, as everyone knows, we've gone to a different timekeeping system. It's Write Stuff, it interfaces with our Allow software. It's just a continuing move towards that, the new upgrades that have happened in the auditor's office. This is the procedure that's put in writing as it relates to the department heads, chief deputies, and then the remaining employees, or department heads or chief deputies, or the non-exempt employees, the dealing with the clocking in, clocking out. We do anticipate this being a living document, so to speak, as we continue to ferret out the different issues we have, and unique issues we have in different departments. But I do believe this is a good start to get everybody going. This will allow us also to have a policy to enforce, and then also to be able to disseminate that out to the department, so that we can get a final live date with the departments and the auditor, that this is all going through, Write Stuff in the proper manner. So this has been vetted by myself, it's been vetted by our HR director, it's been vetted by the auditor, it's been vetted by everyone that we can get their eyes on, and to try to make it as good as we can at this stage. I'm comfortable with suggesting or recommending that we adopt this timekeeping policy as of today, just keeping in mind that we are going to have some issues coming up, and we'll have to address those. But that is fine. The gist of it is, the department heads will be exempt employees. They will be using the daily time form as the term of art within the Write Stuff software. They will not be eligible for comp time. And they'll have their specific policies to deal with. The chief deputies, the assistant directors, or like kind, will be using, they will be clocking in, clocking out. That includes lunch. They will be exempt. They will also not be having the ability to get comp time or overtime. And then the rest of the employees will be non-exempt. They'll be clocking in, clocking out, including lunch. And then they'll be, through our other policies, and they will be eligible for comp time if they work over the weekly amount. And then we've dealt with some issues as far, in the policy, as far as the lunch. A good example is the Highway Department. They're out and about, they're not at their office, so we've exempted them from the clocking in and clocking out for lunch. But they have an automatic hour taking off their day. So I would recommend approval, and we can get this ball rolling. And then we can work with Vicky in the coming days, to get a date when everyone that's utilizing this through our auditor's office is live and using this on a daily basis.
Any comments from the board? All I'd like to say is that this is, this is the beginning of a lot of heavy lifting here. We haven't had really a standard plan throughout the whole county. And this, I think this brings us, first of all, in the compliance. But the other thing what it does is, I think it starts a march towards effective time management and timekeeping policy, which is what we're responsible for up here. And I think the policies will evolve as we work through them. Having an HR department in my company thought that this task would be a little bit easier than what it is. But getting into county government, there's a lot of different needs, a lot of different people, working a lot of different places, a lot of different times, for a lot of different reasons. And some are public safety, some are not. And it's very hard to thread the needle. And we're basically going through this page by page. And it's a slog. But we're going to get it figured out. And we're going to put some good best practices together for everybody to follow and for us to follow up on. So I'm excited, but this is the beginning. And this is the beginning of a lot of hard work, and a lot of tough decisions that we're going to have to make up here. So it's bittersweet. I embrace this, but I also know the amount of work that's coming in front of us. So it's, and Vicky's department's going to bear a lot of the brunt of that as well, too, as well with our HR office and our office and our staff, so.
But it has everything to do with efficiency. The last major rewrite in county policies was done in the mid-'90s in county government. So implementing this timekeeping policy, along with a rewrite, a major rewrite of our county policies, you know, it's, as the commissioners know, as we've talked about, it's all about being more efficient here in our operations and our protocols.
Some more?
No, I agree. I just, I'm sure there's some people out there that we haven't taken into consideration by just following through the cracks. And if something's not working, just let's talk it through. And like Scott said, it's a living document. We expect to have to make some tweaks to it.
Well, I think we all sat around the table and got as far as we could. And that's where we said, let's just put it out there and wait for the feedback to come back, and then we'll readdress. And that's, that's all you can do in these kinds of situations is, it's massive of issues that we're dealing with here. We're going line by line, page by page. And so not fun stuff, but it needs to be done.
The only thing, the only last thing I have to say is that as soon as this is done and we meet with Vicky, we are going to have a drop-dead date of this going live. And that is going to need to be adhered to, or there is going to be people that could potentially not get paid. And I don't mean that as a threat, but I just, this has been a process. There's been training. They've been, we've been waiting for this policy. We've, it's been, like Jeff has said, it's been a slog. But we are going to be announcing a date soon, in the next couple of weeks. This is the date. Everyone's going live. And this is what you're utilizing. And this is the options that you have pursuant to the policy. And if you're one of our departments that is under control of the commissioner's office, that's what you're going to be expected to be utilizing. Go ahead.
Yep, that's it. Vicky, Vicky's got something to say.
Yes. I just want to say thank you to the commissioners for this policy. I know there was a lot of work put into it. There's some very tough decisions that had to be made. And I appreciate it. I think we're going to be moving towards, this policy is going to help clarify a lot of issues that we've been dealing with. In terms of going live, I'm proud to say, there's two offices completely on Write Stuff now. There's no turning back. And one is one of your departments, the Expo Center.
Yep.
This payroll, we're going to attempt something. We have tentatively 10 departments coming live, this next payroll. Yes. And then we're moving more with the other departments. Some are very complicated, like the Sheriff's Department and E-911. They have different shifts. They have different issues. But we're moving forward. So I want to thank you for the policy. This is a huge step for us. And keep in mind, we couldn't get to this unless you gave your consent last year to upgrading the financial software. And again, I wish to thank you for that. That was a momentous decision in our county. And now it advanced to this level. So thank you again.
Thank you, Vicky, and your department for busting through all that. It's good when you have a-
We love doing that.
Good. Well, I'll open up the floor for the timekeeping policy. Are there any questions or anything out there?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve Porter County timekeeping policy. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. We're live. Next up is health insurance. April 1st, 2018 through April 1st, 2019. We're going to have Tony and Richard from RE Sutton come in front of us. Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning, ladies.
We've had a busy couple, last couple of weeks.
You get to have that. Okay. So, yep, we have had a busy couple of weeks since we met two weeks ago today. If you look at that packet that was sent over-
Last night?
Yep. If you flip that open, you can see that first page there. This is very similar to what we looked at a couple of weeks ago when we looked at this. It's your current summary of benefits. I did add a side notation there on, too, because we just- today, but, and then some are tied to that as well. So, looking at this being kind of the, what we would see as recommended if, moving forward, and this looks at a couple things that need to be addressed. One is the IRS requirement for HSA regulations. So, currently, you're at the, at the bottom of what you can be to have a qualified high deductible plan, the IRS raises that limit, so your deductible does need to go up with the structure of your plan by $100 on that, so go from $2,600 up to $2,700. Family just taking stuff with that. I did add, if you would choose to go with United or another option that we'll be looking at a little bit, as far as more of the network arrangement, you've got to have an in and out of network arrangement there. Today, your high deductible plan has a, has a co, what's called co-mingle, and that means those accumulate together if you're in or out of network. So, we would have to put in an out of network deductible for that. But again, with those network arrangements, those networks match really strong, I mean, 98, 99% of your current utilization falls into those networks. So, that's something that you actually really do want to have in place as well, to keep people going in network, it protects them from balance billing, and it helps protect the plan to keep them going in network where you're going to drive discounts, so. The next page on here, this is a breakdown that I did on just the reporting, so you kind of see how some of your claims have broken down. This is for the first nine months of your current contract, so April 1 through December 31. You can see the different line items on there as far as providers. If you just kind of go down the bottom, you can see the breakdown here, and we talk a lot about discounts, and especially under the current structure with repricing and everything. This does try to give you a better idea of when we're talking total savings, but then we do pay some, what I call, shared savings fees in order to get that. So, it does, when you net some of those out, it does bring it down into the range of what we're seeing elsewhere under more PPO arrangements. So, part of that is just in those savings, and I'll talk more about some of those fees and stuff as we go into the actual bids, but that does bring kind of the net savings down from what we kind of talk about gross savings. So, I think that's just important to see and point out there. So, any questions on that one? If you flip to the next page, this looks similar to what we looked at a couple weeks ago as far as pricing. There are a couple changes to this, and some of these have come in just very recently, so we'll have to talk about really what that means for the bottom line. There is, as we go down through this, some adjustments that would need to be made to the kind of the bottom line numbers, but based upon the timing and when we had to have everything over here, and then also with, in having conversations with stop-loss carriers and stuff, we'll talk about what some of those different savings would look like, but as far as from a hard numbers perspective, I didn't have hard numbers back from any stop-loss, so we couldn't really update that page, so to speak. So, you can see the first column here, this is your BAS HCC renewal. No change to this from last time when we looked at it, other than INETCO has come back realizing that some of those fees have really watered down what they're attempting to do as far as total savings, and they're dropping those fees pretty significantly in the range of, you know, $400,000, $500,000 as far as their fees. So, you know, that does, that would impact that bottom line number by those amounts, which brings it to be more competitive and in line with some of the other options. So, you know, if you were to drop that down by that, again, I just didn't have everything in time to go back to stop-loss. I didn't feel comfortable adjusting those, those underwriter stop-loss numbers. I know that they would come down because that's a direct savings out, but again, with the timing couldn't do that. The next piece in here, this is one that's, that's come out of some conversations, and we've recently, we had talked previously about, you know, keeping BAS in place as the administrator, but switching to Cigna as a network. So, that kind of does get out of that reference-based pricing arrangement. So, what has come to light out of that is kind of a hybrid approach to this, and this would be retaining BAS as your administrator, using Cigna as a big national network, similar to what you're really going to see under, under United, but then keeping the Porter agreement that you currently have in place, that direct contract with Porter, keeping that in place. This would come with wanting to change up benefits a little bit to steer people to go to Porter, if that's where they, we feel like the best deal is under the Cigna arrangement, to keep that direct contract in place. So, it does, you know, I have a footnote down here that, you know, we'll have to work through some things to nail down all the details and everything like that to do something like this, but I think it's a, it was a good attempt by them to try to address some of the concerns that you've got with, with your current plan, give you a big national network, keep that direct contract in place. But again, some of those details that need to be worked out, you do have that agreement with, with Porter, that would, that would stay in place, though, so.
Would the same thing happen on the reinsurance, too, here? That you would have to go back and requalify that or reprice that?
Yeah, yeah, and we'd want to, too, based upon that. So, really what we have in here is looking at, under the current arrangement, assuming kind of just the Cigna deal, but I think those are worst-case scenario numbers, so to speak, that those would come down because it felt like the agreement with Porter was better than what we'd get through Cigna to go to that, so having that, so that the expected claims would come down, as well as some savings on pharmacy side and stuff. It's just, we haven't had a chance to really quantify that with stop-loss. You know, I've got some, some numbers in from BAS and INETCO on what those estimated savings would be by doing that, but again, to filter that down through and for us to analyze that didn't happen before we had to send all this over, so. So, that's, that's that one. The next one here, on here is BAS with HCC, going with Cigna OAP. That's really not through conversations, probably what the target strategy would be, so we won't really touch on that one here. But you can see the next two here, renewal UMR HCC, both of them here, just one slight variance between the two contracts here that I want to touch on. You know, the first column in there is, is no change from what we talked about a couple weeks ago, but as I had mentioned, HCC did offer on this one to do a no laser at renewal. It does add some premium into it, but it protects you for next year, so you're not running into any lasers next year. That, that's a little bit of a gamble, but in years it could pay off, in other years you're not going to have to worry about a laser anyway. This year through Sun Life, you did have, had you kept Sun Life as your current, they're your current reinsurance carrier, had you kept them, they did have a $250,000 laser on that, meaning that the county would have to pick up an extra $250,000 for that member. So, in that case, it would have protected you against that, so it can save on that back end, but HCC didn't have a laser. So, in some years when you bid it, some will have lasers, some won't, it's just protection on the front end to know that you're not going to have to if you stick with that reinsurance carrier. It does cost about an extra $30,000 to have that, so you pay upfront to have a guarantee later. Some years we feel like it really does pay off, and other years you think it was just, it was extra in there, so I don't know if you-
What type of claims do that usually tie down to laser claims?
It is all over the board. I think my recommendation that your size of a group would be not to have the laser, not to have the guarantee. You know, it, it has caused problems elsewhere, but it's seldom. And if that happens, we shop reinsurance, we look at options, all that's available. So, paying the extra now at a group your size probably doesn't make as much sense as just continuing to bid the stop-loss every year.
Any questions from the board?
That's not what I was expecting you to say. Most of the years I've been sitting here, we've had a laser.
Lasers, yeah, yeah. The continual process of looking at stop-loss, we'll find stop-loss carriers that won't have a laser on it. So, as long as we are diligent about every year going after stop-loss, we should be okay. Dental, you want to mention that?
Yeah, and the next page here, dental, no change from, from last week, or a couple weeks ago when we looked at that. You know, our, our recommendation on here is, if you were making a change on the medical side, would be to go with Delta Dental and run it that way. So, one piece on the, on the United side, they can feed your eligibility over to Delta Dental, so that helps just from internal standpoints, to be able to do that as far as not having them in the same house, but one will feed to the other, so it keeps your staff from having dinner and data two different places, so.
I didn't do this, I'm going to go back to the other page in a second, but, so on this one, just because I know everyone can't see what we see. So, our current renewal with BAS, if we stayed with, on the renewal with BAS for the dental would be about $378,716, would be roughly a 4.5% increase. And then the Delta Dental proposal is about $320,294.
Yeah.
And that's the one that, then the UMR option was $395,986.
Yeah, so the difference there to point out between the BAS and then the Delta is, Delta would, it includes a network. So, members go to those, again, just like on your medical side with the network, they avoid balance billing, they go through all that. Today, you don't have a network under, under the BAS option, something you could certainly put in if you'd want to do that. I know in some conversations with some of your employees, they did ask about a dental network a little bit, just because they had received balance billing on, on some of those, but it's much smaller dollars overall, but again, it's, it does help protect those members.
Yep. All right, let's go back to the actual health.
Okay.
Health, so, on the renewal, now that, when your recommendation upon the laser issue, we went with United Healthcare, and then their UMR, their third party, their in-house third-party carrier, or third-party pay TPA. The UMR HCC, that's total expected cost is about $8,280,714 as we sit here right now. And then the maximum expected is $9,757,304.
Correct.
And, so now, currently, if we stayed with the renewal with BAS and HCC, which is our current, complete current format.
Correct, that first BAS column there, yep.
Yes, so that would be total expected cost of $8,408,462. Is that, am I reading that correctly?
You're reading that correctly, and that's one, though, that with-
The stop-loss-
INETCO dropping their fees, let's say if it's $400,000, it does bring that, bring that down by that amount, assuming that the stop-loss carrier would kind of credit that back in, knowing that they're reducing those fees.
Can I just make a comment about that? So, there's always in a bid process, fine tuning, some of these things that are happening late in the game are beyond that, and at some point, protecting the integrity of the bid process is important.
Yep.
Just, just a comment.
Yep. No, we were going to get to that, I was just-
Okay.
I wanted, I just wanted to kind of get-
We're with you.
And then out of, so then we have a, the complete Cigna renewal with BAS and HCC, that was, we saw that earlier with the Cigna's options, the United Healthcare options, and the AMP's options.
We discussed that previously, yeah, as far as that. So, it's kind of that middle BAS one there that's really come to light here just recently, that kind of hybrid-ing, a hybrid approach on Cigna, but then also bringing in that Porter deal to capture more savings than just Cigna alone.
Okay. And right now, because it's, this process has been going on for months, basically, and because of this kind of newer idea, that's why, that, right now, that total expected on that option with the Porter and Cigna deal is basically $8.5 million, and the maximum expected at this point is a little over $10 million. But that would be, that could be fine tuned, if we went, if we went this route, we would have to be looking back at our stop-loss and et cetera.
Yep.
Right.
Which is one of the reasons why we started this-
So early.
So early, because it's such an important decision that it's hard to get information at the last minute, and that's not a, that's not your guys' issue.
Only when we get it last minute is our issue.
Yeah.
So, what we have before us then, to make it clear to everybody here and on the record, is we have a current health insurance plan that we have today, which is reference-based pricing plan, okay? We also have a hybrid of a reference-based pricing and a network plan, and then we have a network plan. So, we have choices, finally, here in Porter County. I think, I think just a testament to this board's work and focus, and again, I'm banging our drum up here, but nobody else will. When I came to this office three years ago, we were around $13.5, $14 million for our insurance on an annual basis, and now we're below 10. So, our trajectory is going the right way. So, with all this momentum that we've gained over the last couple years here, we're now at a pivot point to where we need to make a decision on, on where, where we go from here to continue that, that mining towards a lower number, but not trying to leave anybody behind with the level of care and services that we're providing as of today. So, I'm very encouraged that we have choices. I'm encouraged that people that we've, you know, by being competitive in the way we've gone about this, we actually have movement going on even before the meetings, which is a good thing to, to a certain extent. And that's all down, it's not up. So, I just want to thank you guys for helping us get to this point. I know it's been a ton of work, but this is very important, not only to the county from a fiscal standpoint, but it's more importantly, more important to our employees to make sure that they have a good plan and, and, and good, that they're, they're taken care of on the health side. So, that, that was sort of my little blip about what, where we're at and what we're going from, but we have choices. We, we have all different kinds of ways we can go, and it looks like there's a lot of parity in the pricing here. So, I think, you know, it looks good. Any other comments from anybody else, or?
Well, just one of the things that I liked about UMR, maybe nobody out in those seats is seeing, is there's a, there's a pretty user-friendly patient portal that's online, and you can see all the different places that do the labs or whatever that you need to have done, and prices, and so it's going to be a nice, easy process to pick the cheapest place to do it, and the doctors there are rated, and I think you'll get better health options at better prices, and that's going to help all of us, and eventually, hopefully, bring our claims down.
Yeah, one of the, to dovetail to that, one of the issues that we did like a lot about the United Healthcare option was the online portion of it. I mean, there's, besides the network and the Choice Plus that was chosen, et cetera, but having that portal for the employee to get on, their deductibles loaded on, they know where they're at on their deductible, they can make choices based upon a rating system that's, that's on there, they know if they're getting an MRI, this is their cost, this is the plan's cost, this is your options within so much of a radius, and as employees make decisions that are in their best interest, it automatically kind of makes those decisions in our best interest also, because as they make choices, and it's kind of, at this point, I don't believe we have, our employees don't have access to be able to get to that information kind of in the, before action's taken, it's kind of always after those things kind of come to light. So, I think that's a, a piece of this pie that if we go with UMR, will be a little difficult to get all the employees educated on so that they're utilizing it, but it would be one of the, one of the parts of the, of the UMR option that was quite attractive from the commissioner's standpoint.
Yep. I think at the end of the day, health insurance is always about claims, you know? It's really about claims.
Yep.
And-
And claims history.
And claims history. And we, over the last couple of years, we've been transitioning with this reference-based pricing to become a healthier group, to have more of a wellness program, more of a preventative approach, and I think the only way that you can get a large group of employees into that mindset is that your plan has to be user-friendly. And that's one of the problems that I've always had with reference-based pricing, that if someone walks into a hospital where we don't have an agreement cut with the hospital, immediately you get into reference-based, you get into balance billing.
Yep.
You get in all kinds of things, and what happens when you get into that, and some of you might have had that happen with you at the county level, you start getting bills from hospitals, and you shouldn't be, that shouldn't be happening. And so, from our perspective, I think a lot of the responsibility and a lot of the onus falls back on the employee, whereas a network program in, in the UMR that we've been sort of laser-focused on here the last several months- And, so, from our perspective, I think a lot of the responsibility and a lot of the onus falls back on the employee, whereas a network program and the UMR that we've been sort of laser-focused on here the last several months, this would be a very easy program to roll out to our employees, and it'll be very easy for them to understand where they have to go. And to me, if you're all about claims, and you're all about keeping your wellness together, the only way wellness works is education, and to educate, you have to be able to get to your people, and your people have to be able to get to the program so they understand how it works. And I think that's what we're trying to do here, is we're trying to simplify it, and pivot and turn into a different program, and I think that's the benefits that I'm seeing where we're at today, is that reference-based pricing, I think, has been a good fix for us to understand where we're going, but now I think, I think it's a great opportunity to transition and go to a, to a plan that is more user-friendly for our employees. So, that's, that's my two cents. Jim, any comments, or?
Nope.
Laura? So, I guess in order for us to keep on our trajectory and to keep on our plan, we need to make a decision here today, correct?
Yes, we need to, basically-
Yeah.
Accept one of the proposals and then start moving to fine-tuning those proposals at one of our upcoming commissioners' meetings to get those contracts in place, as we kind of dot all the i's and cross the t's on whichever one we choose here.
I think it's also important, too, to talk about, we've had discussions with our consultants at NOSHA about, there are no, there are no back billings here, there are no rebates, there are no, there's, there's no money coming in on the backside of any of this stuff. All the fees have been pulled out of, if we were to go to a UMR program, all the fees are gone. So, we're just dealing with claims, and we're dealing with a network plan, is what we're dealing with. And then the only dollars involved is your guys' small fee per employee, which they get paid to handle on behalf of, as a consultant for the county, but most of the work here that will take place with our insurance, we'll be able to handle it ourself in-house. So, we won't have a lot of outside people you have to talk to, you'll have an 800 number, a card that you can go to first, but we'll also have a fallback situation here to where we can direct and get people to the right people. We've already met with the UMR people, we talked with the team here in Northwest Indiana, they seemed very eager. Actually, the VP for this region is a resident of Alpejo, which was very good to find out in our meeting, so we have some ownership here locally, which I think is good. So, you know, I think the time is right. So, I'll open up the floor for anybody to make a motion.
Nobody will, I will.
I'm going to make the motion that we do, we move our county health insurance to United Healthcare, and we do it under the, number one, two, three, four, five tab, this would be without the laser, and that's what our insurance would be for in 2018 to 2019. Do I need to solidify that motion, sir?
Give me a second.
Well, I just wanted to make sure I said it right.
You got it.
I chickened out and figured it out.
Yeah, well, I would, yeah.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for Porter County to move their health insurance program to United Healthcare under a-
Do we need to include the dental?
That'll be a second.
That'll be, yeah, we'll do that under separate. So, we have a motion and a second for renewal to United Healthcare slash HCC on the reinsurance. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Now, we're going to talk about dental. If you know in the past, our dental was also through Inetico, it was through sort of a reference, that was sort of a-
Just through BAS.
It was through BAS, sort of a hybrid type deal, or was it just their plan?
It was pretty straightforward.
Just their plan?
Yep.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve that Delta Dental proposal.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to move the Porter County Dental Program to, Delta Dental has a very good network here in Porter County. I think everyone will be very pleased where, they do dental only, they're not, they're not hospital, they're not, they do dental only, and they do it very well. So, we have a motion and a second on Delta Dental. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. We now have Delta Dental. And the last thing that we're going to talk about here, that's sort of a continuation of our discussion last meeting, is we've had several meetings since that meeting to start talking about an in-house, or, I shouldn't say in-house, moving the county to a wellness clinic. This is a clinic that exists today with a lot of the school systems here, Northwest Indiana. It is, this is part of that program. We talked about the wellness and moving people towards a clinic more than moving them towards their doctor, which is a claim, so your claim goes up, right? We said it was all about claims. And we've met with, we met with the group that is handling that right now, and we had some very good discussions. If we were to bring our group in, could they change the hours to where we could do early hours, evening hours for our employees? There's even discussions going on right now, they're looking for a new place to have their office, and we're actually talking to them about maybe bringing that clinic inside our building here, which now we would have an in-house clinic within county government. We think this is another piece of the pie to help drive our costs down, but yet increase that level of service for our employees, that they have an instant clinic that they can go to. So, it's sort of a twofold process. We, we get them more on-demand services, right?
Yep.
But, that they can come in and come out with, usually they get a list of 120 top drugs that they'll give to them when they, they leave, you know, versus-
Running through the-
Running through the old program and driving your claims up, right? So, this is the second, the third part of that stool where we're trying to now, and it's a wellness component, too, of that. And actually, this, if we were to bring it in-house here, we would actually call it the Porter County Wellness Clinic here for Porter County Government. So, a lot of neat things that we're talking about right now, we needed to get the health insurance piece put, put to bed first, but our next main level of work that we have is trying to figure out where this wellness clinic will be if we participate, how that's all going to work, but I, I, I know Commissioner Biggs, he's on the, his wife works for the Chesterton School System, and they are on the clinic, and Jim, you, I mean-
Yeah, it's a great, great program, great service. Go in there, you get your scripts, everything, and just, you know, one visit, it's really nice.
Yep.
And I guess what I would add to that is, it kind of goes back to the online portal with United Healthcare, it's, the clinic is going to this commissioner's office, our HR department, United Healthcare, and whoever our wellness clinic provider ends up being. There's going to be some significant work to get everybody educated, to utilize the tools that we're trying to put out there. The wellness clinic concept, no matter who you're utilizing, it takes a certain amount of utilization by the employees, and if that doesn't happen, it's not cost-effective. So, there are some significant carrots to be, to be, to using the clinic-
Yep.
-that would seem to drive people to utilize it, but I think that's more, again, about the education of everyone so they know what it is, what it isn't. We can kind of, as we all know, it won't be long before misinformation will be running around the building rampant. We're used to it, it is what it is, but nevertheless, getting people to really understand the tools that we're trying to put in place so people can utilize the healthcare for their benefit, and so that we can keep having the cost in a range that we can afford so we can continue to provide. And it's going to need to, it's going to need to take all of these things working together. We go with the clinic concept, and as we implement United Healthcare, everyone's going to have to get an idea of how it's working, otherwise, we're going to be sitting, we're going to do this every year. So, again, this, it's not threat, it's just at the end of the day, it's dollars, and if these things aren't utilized, the online portal, the wellness clinic, then it will just show an increase in costs, and which will then have to make difficult decisions will have to be made as what, what we can afford. But, a lot of work has been done over the last couple of years to get our claims to a point where we had choices, okay? Because lots of years, we didn't have choices that were, they were choices, but they weren't anywhere near feasible from an economic standpoint. So, being able to have choices now and then be able to try to put these tools in place, it's going to be our HR department, our office, and all these entities are going to have to work in concert really hard to try to get our utilization rates up.
Yep.
For instance, for the clinic concept, whoever is used-
Right.
-we're 60% utilization before we're in that, kind of into that area where it's, it's making, from a total financial sense-
Break even.
Break even.
Exactly.
Break even, so, there's going to have to be a lot of that.
Which also encourages us to make sure it's a good clinic, and a good experience.
Correct.
That's our intent.
And so, we're just going to need the employees, we're really changing.
Yep.
You know, it was confusing, it's reference-based pricing, and while we all kind of got more used to it and got a little bit more able to navigate through the system, we're going to, one of the reasons, I think, for the change is to be able to have a more traditional approach. It's a little bit easier to let the employees know what's happening, and then kind of give these tools out, but we're going to have to have employee participation to be able to keep going in this direction.
Yeah, my biggest problem with reference-based pricing is, there's a lot of consultants getting paid a lot of money, but at the end of the day, the education all fell back on us again, and I just didn't think there was enough value there for what we were getting with all the fees and how it all works, and you get three or four different consultants on a health insurance plan, you got a lot of people pointing a lot of different fingers at a lot of different things, and we just felt that that just wasn't healthy for us. I think the other thing to point out, too, for the employees that are listening to this or hear, is that what, what will, one of the part, one of the reasons we met with the United Healthcare team was to talk about how we were going to roll this out to the employees, and they're very committed to a very proper rollout. Same way with the health clinic, if we were to make that step and move, we talked very much at length about how they're going to roll this out, how we're going to communicate it to the employees. So, these decisions that we made today, even though monetarily, plan-wise, there's a lot of information that's baked into these groups that we've dealt with and met with to let them know that they have a lot of heavy lifting due, and they have, that the onus is on them to come in here and present themselves to our employees to make their world better, and they know that, 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 what do you call it, that we set the expectation level in that meeting for them. So, they know what they have to work against right now. So, I know babbling a lot of different things, but there's a lot that goes into this, and there's, there's, you know, you got to get people on both sides that are willing to do the right thing, and that's what I think we've got lined up here right now, so.
And that's why we're sitting here in February attempting to make this-
Not April 3rd.
And not, you know, two weeks beforehand, yes, because we want to have it rolled out appropriately, because if it's not utilized, we're not going to see the cost savings that we're looking for.
Yep.
So, you will be, we will be putting that list together of how we're going to roll this out to the employees. It'll probably be by departments, by group size, something, but there will be a lot of rollout coming, so stay tuned. I think we beat that one to death. So, thank you, guys. Any other questions of these gentlemen? Thank you.
Thank you.
New beginning.
Appreciate you.
Can we skip to the back and let this-
Who's that?
Jessica from College School. She here?
You in those schools. Ask, is there, is? I don't think there's anybody here.
She was here last year.
Oh. Okay. Tourism Board Attorney Dave Hollenbach and Laura Lyman. Good morning. I think it's still morning, isn't it?
It is.
After that, Wendy Moner.
Revenue is virtual. Visitors Commission comes before you this morning in hopes of getting your acquiescence in a program that has been with us for many years. It's a collaborative effort between the County Council, the Visitors Commission, and the Commissioners whereby a portion of the annual inkeeper's tax revenue, in this case $150,000, is dedicated directly to four venues in the county for purposes of enhancing their promotional efforts, and that includes the Porter County Park Department, which of course has its own board and approved this at last Thursday's meeting, but the Commissioners are involved because the other three venues are the Memorial Opera House, the J.O. Museum, and the Expo Center. The three venues you are involved in each have a commitment of $38,120, and I'll let Laura Ly explain how we arrived at that figure.
Yes, so the original amount from our budget was $89,100. Of that $89,100, historically, 40% of that always went to the Parks Department, so their agreement was $35,640. Now that it's up to $150,000, we minus that from the $150,000, that remaining total then is divided three ways with the other three venues for $38,120.
And the total figure has grown through the years, and it's a matter of discussions during the annual budget approval process by the Council, County Council, where that figure is arrived at. So, we have the venue agreements for your consideration today. Any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions?
I know this has helped our venues out a lot, and in particular, Opera House and Expo Center have really seen a positive movement in their revenue as a result of this extra marketing, so it's much appreciated.
And it's also important for the Visitors Commission because that's part of our role and responsibility, and that's to enhance venues within Porter County so people will come and visit us.
I think it's working.
And spend their money.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve a request to approve cooperative funding and development agreement on behalf of the Museum Foundation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries.
It would also be for the J.O. and the Expo Center. There are three agreements.
I think it says museum, but I think I also meant the other three venues we talked about.
So, Poco and Expo.
Memorial Opera House and-
MOH, yeah.
Yeah.
MOH, I'm sorry.
Dave, I'm not sure we got the other two, that's why. Just bring them over.
I've got them right here.
That's fine.
Okay.
Once you give them to Rada, then she can get them signed.
We need to probably approve them all.
Then let's just, let's do another motion and the two, because, you know, what we had was the Porter County Museum Foundation, so we need to-
Motion to approve the cooperative funding and development agreements on behalf of the Museum Foundation, Memorial Opera House, Parks, and the Expo Center.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Got that done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Auditor Vicky Urbani. We have a request to approve the SRI contract for the Commissioner's Live Certificate Sale. What you got, Vicky?
Okay, well, this is a continuation of the decision that you made last year to resume having Commissioner's certificate sales. As a reminder, these are the parcels that did not sell at the tax sale, and the Commissioner's sale is sort of an accelerated version of the tax sale. The goal is to get parcels back on the tax rolls. And so, we're, we've been informed that you would like to continue doing it this year, so you would need to approve the resolution announcing that you're having a Commissioner's sale, and then the contract approval with the vendor who would handle most of the matters involving the sale.
Vicky, on the SRI contract, are those the same terms and conditions that we got on the last sale?
Most of the language is the same, but no, the percentage of the, the payment to SRI increased from, well, it went back to what they originally proposed last year. But as you might recall, last year, there was some negotiation, brought it down to 7%.
Yeah.
They're proposing to go back to 15%, which was their original proposal. Running some numbers, if we have the same type of sale as last year with the same percentage of parcels that are being offered, we have fewer parcels to be sold this year. Partly, that's because we've been successful in getting parcels back on the tax rolls. So, we have fewer parcels, less taxes due, so if the same percentages apply, they would receive almost the same amount of payment as last year. Last year was $13,216, assuming the same scenario as last year, this year would be $13,421.
And how many parcels are up for sale this year?
This year, it would be, 351 would be offered compared to last year's 300. This year, it would be, 351 would be offered compared to last year's 377. That's what would be offered, not necessarily the number that would be sold. Of course, we'd like all of them to be sold, but.
So they're saying for 40 less parcels, they're doubling the fee?
Percentage, yes.
Yeah. I thought, I thought they were going to be coming back in at that same fee. I thought we had beat them down last year, I thought.
We had asked them to submit a proposal, the same as last year, and this is what was presented.
So they went from a 7% fee to 15%, and only 40 more pieces, probably. Who bears the cost? Yeah, who bears the cost of this?
The purchasers of the liens, the lien holders. These costs are passed on to the lien holders.
So they're not coming out of the county?
No, they're not.
So if a citizen comes and purchases a piece of property on a certificate sale, they're bearing this cost?
Yes.
This is a pass-through cost?
Yes.
So, okay. Well, the key to that is the quality of the SRI service and the quality that's getting passed down to the purchaser is also part of, meaning the clarity of what we're passing through is part of this equation also, from SRI.
Well, this is the same company that handles our tax sale every year, so they're familiar with our process, they're familiar with the parcels, they have the advertising ready to go. If you approve the resolution today, we will advertise as soon as it can get published.
Last year, we had about how much?
390.
390 parcels?
377 were offered, but 119 were sold.
And what do we have, right, if we did this, what are we at now?
351.
351 would be offered. If it's the same percentage, if it's the same amount of interest as last year, we would anticipate that approximately 110, 112 parcels would be sold. And again, the amount of taxes due is less than last year.
How many of these are repeats?
Probably about 100 of them.
I can get that for you.
Well, it's part of the problem, is we had years where we just had many years where this wasn't happening.
It wasn't being done.
Right, right. And as you recall, last year, the minimum bid, you would also need to establish the minimum bid. The minimum bid was a tier structure based on how many times the parcels were on the tax sale before. And I believe the average number of times these parcels were on tax sale before, I believe, was three prior tax sales. So we do have a number of repeat, but the actual number, I can get that for you. I don't have it.
Has gone down.
Pardon me?
Has gone down as a result of last year's.
Yes, last year's tax sale with 119 that were sold, 63 actually were issued a tax deed, meaning that the new owners took ownership, those are back on the tax rolls. Another 20 were redeemed, meaning that the original owners paid up what they needed to be. So we had a pretty good percentage, 70% got back on the tax sale. That's just from the certificate sale, not the tax sale.
And because we, because we did that, because we had the sale last year, the property at 1241 Red Bud in Wake Robin, which you may or may not remember, I talked about last year, it was a, I mean, just an absolute eyesore for that subdivision. It, the roof had collapsed, and it, I went and visited it, there must have been two to three inches of animal feces on the kitchen floor. The roof come down, when it come down, it went through the main floor and into the basement. It had been sitting like that for years. I sent the highway department out to mow the grass and cut the weeds down, but, you know, nobody could get the owner to move on it. So, the property went back on tax sale as a result of the program last year. It's sold. The gentleman had bought it, bought that property and five others, and he is working with the local contractor, and they're either going to rehab it totally, or take it off the property totally and build a brand-new home. And they're, and they're going to be moving on it in the next 30 days. So, we are getting some results. And that's what, you know, that's my only concern about, you know, SRI's a good company, they do, they do a good job. But I, you know, I'm kind of concerned about them raising their fee, that amount, because I, you know, we shouldn't be doing anything that may discourage somebody from, you know, buying one of these properties and getting it back into shape, so.
Do you think, Vicky, that probably, probability is pretty good that of those 110, 115 pieces that didn't sell last year, are those sort of the land of misfit properties that are odd pieces and, you know?
Yes.
Because I know, because I'm thinking if we run into that this time in this sale, I think our office and your office are going to have to sit down and pow-wow about how we're going to try to get rid of the bottom 50 to 100 somehow. Because some of these pieces, folks, are like, it's a little piece of property at the end of someone's lot. It, there's some really weird one-off pieces out there that.
We have a number of that underwater.
Yeah. But, you know, Commissioner Good's actually right, you know, we, and again, we spoke, we spoke about this a little bit last, and I know I spoke to Attorney McClure about it, is that, you know, these property, you know, put it, put them back on, if these, we have this, this reoccurring theme where these properties just aren't selling, that we create some kind of program, put these properties in the program, maybe offer them to local contractors for nothing, on the, you know, the agreement that within the next 90 days or so, they go in and improve it, put it up back, you know, you know, put it back in operating order, where some, you know, a family could move into it and start paying taxes. So, but.
Well, we started the discussion on that. What can we do about these repeat parcels that are just causing added work every year? No one's interested in them. You know, we can't predict that they'll never, ever sell, but if they're repeat parcels, what can we do about that?
Well, I've had contractors call me and said, and, I mean, this is not my idea, saying, hey, look, if, you know, this thing is such deplorable condition, it's going to cost me hundreds of, or thousands of dollars to clean it, the property up. But if the county was willing to forego what it would, what I'd normally have to pay in a tax sale, I'll go in at my expense, clean it up, and put something new back on that property and sell it.
Well, and I think part of that is that we, part of, we've got a multiple-faceted problem. And the first problem was, we weren't doing this every year. So we've had some of these built up.
Yep.
And so, this is the first chance for the contractors to come in and buy a piece of property for 50 or $100.
Exactly.
I mean, this is, this is the bargain basement time. We need to keep doing these year after year to keep pairing the list out. I have no doubt, we have 100 to 150 pieces of property that are kind of in no man's land. They're either underwater, they're little triangles, they're all different issues. And I agree, we're going to have to sit down and deal with those separately, but continually having this certificate sale, this is kind of the outlet, and then the Commissioners have some, have some options at the end of the sale. I mean, we can keep them if we want to, and go and then have them under our, have them under the county ownership, and then have, we have options from that point moving forward. But I think part of last year was, if I remember correctly, this room was packed when the sale happened last year. And it had a lot of interest, and there was a lot more action happening than we were necessarily anticipating out of the gate, so, kind of hoping the same thing. And then we're just going to have to dig into those, and that's going to take the work of the assessor's office, the auditor's office, and the commissioner's office to be able to get those other parcels fixed.
Yep.
Well, let's see how it goes.
Do we?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the request for the SRI contract for Commissioner's live certificate sale. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. And we're going to go a resolution establishing the intent to conduct a Commissioner's sale to sell tax sale certificates for properties that are severely delinquent in payment of property taxes.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for a resolution establishing the intent to conduct a Commissioner's tax sale. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Vicky.
Thank you.
Good luck in the sale.
And we will work with you on these problem parcels.
Yep.
So, thank you.
Thank you, Vicky. Don Wilson? Oh, you were hiding back there. I was wondering where you.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning, Don. Don has a request here to approve a purchase agreement for the animal shelter for a copier.
Correct.
Is this, okay, did you see her there? Oh, hey.
Hi.
I didn't see you there. So tell us what you need it for here.
The copier printer fax machine that we have right now is approximately six or seven years old. It is black and white. It breaks down a lot. We were looking at getting a color copier to be able to do some of our own printing of pictures of the dogs and cats that we're trying to get adopted out, as well as just upgrading to a newer, more efficient model, so.
Okay.
Motion to approve both the copier and the maintenance agreement.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve a new copier, a color copier for the animal shelter in the amount of $4,863 and a service agreement for the same machine for the animal shelter. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Good to you.
Expo Center Lori Daly, Lori is not with us today, so we have a request to approve the Times Media Company advertising agreement in the amount of $750 per month.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the Times Media copy advertising agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Lori. Andy, McKay, the highway guy. Hi, Andy.
So lucky.
Is that what your email says, the highway guy?
The highway guy. How you doing?
Good.
Yeah?
Looking for a, some more overtime money, as you probably know, we've been really burning through it very rapidly.
Yep.
And also, the community crossing grant money is for that original Clem Bridge that was back in 2016. I need to pay for it out of that grant money, so I need to transfer.
Okay.
And the other's for salt. And that'll get me the maximum amount I can buy.
Since this is, the first one we'll deal with is appropriations on 1176 overtime and the amount of 50 grand to account 1130 overtime. Just so everybody understands, we've put a new pro-all-in place this year for plowing roads, winter advisory warnings, all these type of things. And as, as, as Andy is sitting here coming before us with an additional for overtime, I would just like to let everybody know that all of this overtime and when the men were deployed, were approved by this office. So we are keeping track of it now. Nobody likes overtime, but it happened at a time where they just had to go. And so, but I wanted to let everybody know that we have processes now in place that when you see an overtime bill come before you here in these chambers, that it has been vetted and it has been approved, and that people are watching. So I just think that's important to let people know, because we're all in it together.
Motion to approve the overtime request.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve additional overtime for $50,000 for additional overtime for snow plowing and salting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. We have a request to transfer funds. This is Fund 9400, a community crossing grant from account 2362 by two minutes in the amount of $249,700 to account 3950 contractual for Bridge 1008 over the Clem Road Bridge. And this is a bridge that has been in the works for quite some time, and now we're just getting to the point for, for paying for things.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for a request to transfer funds in the amount of $249,700 to account 3950 for Bridge number 1008 at the Clem Roads Bridge. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. And last one, we have a request to transfer funds. This is coming out of local roads and streets by two minutes in the amount of $80,000 to account for 2261 road salt to purchase an additional salt. Before we entertain a motion, how much salt, Andy, just for the record, did we start with this year, and what does this get us additional?
Right now, we went through about 5,600 tons of salt. Well, we currently are sitting on probably about 3,500 tons worth full right now, but this money will allow me to buy the maximum up to 7,000 tons.
Under the state contract.
Under the state bid, yes.
Okay. Just wanted everybody to know. We're using a lot of salt.
Yeah, we have.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to transfer funds from local roads and streets in the amount of $80,000 to purchase more salt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thanks, Andy.
Thank you.
Yeah. We're going to move here, Public Safety Director Mike Brickner, is that who you're here for?
I am.
Oh, okay, what do you want to? We can do it, come on up. How are you today?
I'm fine, thank you. My name is Judy Gerrell, I'm the executive assistant.
Okay, hi, Judy.
Hi, thank you.
This is, I know the contract in front of us, the contracts and stuff in front of us, I know we've talked with Mike and Rob in our meetings, where we're meeting with them, going over all of the things that we're uncovering out at 911.
Yes, sir.
So, this is the beginning of that march, I believe. This is, first contract is for Minor Electronics. This is a maintenance contract for 911 in the amount of $2,400. And Minor Electronics, which is a local firm, this gives us maintenance contracts for consoles and onsite infrastructure response.
Yes, sir, 24/7.
24/7. And I think that contract was, oh, shoot, I don't have it up. Do you have it up, Scott?
Here they are.
Oh, good.
Is that what you're looking for?
Oh, yeah, they're right here. Yeah, it's $2,400 a month.
And the reason why that one's monthly is because we know we're having a switchover at some point.
Yep.
Absolutely.
In 2018, so that's one, that's why they've gone out and made that one a monthly amount. A monthly can be canceled when we do the switchover.
Yes.
The next contract, so that one is 2,400 a month, so we can do a motion on that one.
Okay, I'll open the floor to the board.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second for Minor Electronics Maintenance Agreement for E911 in the amount of $2,400 per month. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next one, take us through it.
The maintenance contract for E911 in the amount of $29,787.20 for conventional IP sites, track units, receivers, and base stations. This is continuing our radio project.
Yep, yep.
And this is 24/7 onsite response.
It is, as well.
And it's an annual agreement that runs through November of this year.
It does.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for Minor Electronics Maintenance Contract for E911 in the amount of $29,787.20 for conventional IP sites, track units, receivers, and base stations. That's 24/7 onsite. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. We're getting you guys shored up out there here. Only takes money, right? Motorola Solutions Communication Systems Agreement for E911.
So this was, this is the, what they call the Nice IP Logger, which is basically all the phone logging.
Yes, it is.
And the actual recording.
Of every call.
So of this contract, this is a piece of equipment that fits with the Motorola, it's a piece of Motorola equipment. Our current one is failing.
Absolutely.
And it's outdated.
End of life.
And it also is not, it is not compatible with our new system that's coming.
Correct.
So this is one of the gems we found earlier this year. So this is one of the gems we found earlier this year. So this, the equipment itself is $141,073. The remaining portion of this contract to get you to $450,000-ish is the five-year maintenance agreement that will be paid yearly. So that's roughly, on the firewall side, in year one is $7,767, and then the rest of the maintenance for the logger is $45,270, and then that continues on for five years. So the total amount of the contract, including five years of maintenance, I'm trying to get the number here.
484, or? Yes. 484, 14699. And that's in five payments, five annual payments?
Well, we pay the first year's, just the 141 plus the first year of maintenance, and then every year after that is the, is five, is more of the maintenance, so.
Okay.
This year it's more, right around $200,000, and then it's spread out over the next four.
And where will we get this out?
We're going to, the commissioner's office is gonna find a place to pay for this first year, and then we're gonna be putting it into the 911 budget moving forward.
Okay.
One of the things that we always start working on budgets, which always seems like we're getting ready to work on budgets, but it's one of the things that this budget, this maintenance contract needs to not be forgotten, so we get it tucked into, tucked into wherever it needs to go.
Absolutely not. We shall do that.
Well, I'm sure you guys will.
Oh, yes.
I'm convinced of that. Well, I'll open up the floor to the board. They wanna entertain this, it is.
Anything you wanted to add?
Yep.
The only thing I can say is that this is, as you say, that this is equipment that we didn't realize we needed, those of us who inherited the situation. And because Motorola and Minor have communicated so clearly with us, we absolutely trust that this is, in order to be compatible with the new equipment that's sitting there ready to install, we need it, so.
Yep. Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and second for Motorola Solutions Communication System Agreement for E-911. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We wanna move on. Okay, next one's for the Emergency Management Department. Lance is, he's not with us today. He is out promoting emergency management within Porter County. But what he has requested us to do is, this is part of the reconstruction of the EMA Department as well, and what they have come to, the conclusion is they need, and it's a couple funds out there to help, you know, move money around and do other things. So the first one here is an ordinance establishing a non-reverting fund for the receipt of charitable donations for the Porter County Emergency Management Agency. So what we'll do is we're gonna pause our, pause our commissioner's meeting, and we're gonna open up a public hearing. And with that, we're gonna give, we're gonna present this ordinance and this fund in three different way, we'll give three opportunities to speak for and three against. So what we'll do is, the first person, anybody wishing to come forward and speak against this ordinance can come, so, come forward now. Second opportunity for anybody to come forward to speak against this ordinance. Third and final time, anybody wishing to come forward to address this board against this ordinance. We'll now move to anybody wishing to come and speak on behalf of this ordinance, first call. Second call, anybody wishing to speak on behalf of this ordinance in favor. Third and final time, anybody wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance. And with that, we'll close the public hearing, open the floor on first reading to the board members. Any questions, comments?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and second to, on first reading, to establish a non-reverting fund for the receipt of charitable donations for the Porter County Emergency Management Agency. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll do second reading on our next meeting. And we have another ordinance establishing a non-reverting fund for the Porter County Emergency Management Agency as the fiduciary agent of equipment and supplies used by the Indiana District One Task Force. For some of you that aren't aware, Porter County has their own emergency management department, but there's also a district within Northwest Indiana that I think Porter County, Lake County, and I think a couple other counties are involved in. What this is, is, this is an ordinance that will make the Porter County Emergency Management Agency the fiduciary agent of the equipment and supplies used by that district. So we now actually have a formalized agreement on when they're using our equipment that we have here in Porter County, which is something that has been needed for quite some time. So with that, we're gonna pause the commissioner's office. We're gonna open up another public hearing here. We're gonna give everybody three opportunities for, three opportunities against. So the first time, we're gonna go, anybody wishing, first call, anybody wishing to speak against this ordinance? Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this ordinance? Third and final time, anybody wishing to come forward and speak against this ordinance? Okay, now we're gonna give everybody a first opportunity to come forward to speak for this ordinance in favor. Second opportunity, anybody wishing to come and speak in favor of this ordinance? Third and final opportunity, anybody wishing to come and speak in behalf in favor of this ordinance, which establishes a non-reverting fund for the Porter County EMA as a fiduciary agent of equipment and supplies used by the District One Task Force? And with that, we'll close the public hearing. We'll now open it up to the floor and to the board.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and second on an ordinance establishing a non-reverting fund as Porter County EMA is a fiduciary agent of equipment and supplies used by Indiana District One Task Force. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll read the second reading at our next commissioner's meeting. Next on the list, we have Highway Engineering, Bob Thompson, Director. Morning, Bob.
Morning.
Mr. Novatny, how are you today?
Good morning, Commissioners. First up is the consulting contract, Bridge 62, 625 West over the Kentucky Key River has entered into the right-of-way services, where we're going to be going out and appraising parcels for this. It's the next step, and this is a contract with SEH of Indiana for providing the right-of-way services.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and second to approve an LPA consulting contract with SEH of Indiana LLC for the right-of-way phase services for Porter County Bridge number 62 rehabilitation in the amount of $57,910. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And you got it? What's the next one?
Okay, second item is our bridge inspection program. This is a requirement under the federal highway that we have to do this within a four-year period contract. This is a four-year contract period. Every two years, we do have to have our bridges inspected, and we do have a group that have to be inspected every year according to the federal highway standards due to the sufficiency ratings on this. So this is a four-year contract with United Consulting for providing our bridge inspection services.
And this is the contract portion with them. We've been through proposals and everything else, haven't we?
Yes, we have. That's what I thought. Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay. We have a motion and a second for United Consulting, which is an LPA contract for the county bridge inspection inventory. This is, by the way, this is moving from a different vendor that the county had for years. We're now pivoting and moving to a new engineering firm to take over this responsibility. The amount of this contract, which is a four-year contract, and not to exceed $385,021.20, and two cents. That's for the entire four years. And that's, is that paid?
That is split off evenly.
Evenly?
In each phase. Phase one is a certain price, and then what they do is they base it off of the sufficiency rating. There's a phase one A that's going to be another price. That's only gonna be like 20 bridges.
Right.
And then we go to phase two. Each, it's, that price you have there is broken down within the contract for the four-year period, or I should say the two phases and the two additional phases.
Just to let the record state that, that it's broken down. And it's spelled out in the contract too.
Yes.
And we voted on that, didn't we?
Yep. I think that's it.
Did we vote?
We did, we vote?
No, we did vote.
We didn't?
No.
I made a motion.
Nice, second. We have a motion and a second to approve the United Consulting Agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I'm just doing it again. I'm not, I'm not coming back, so. Jeff had a senior moment. Yes, I did. See, I knew you'd get back at me eventually. Figured it was coming. And then, oh, that's why you're staying, 'cause you guys are up next, too. Is it, this is Engineering and Plan Commission. This is, go ahead, Bob.
These are for maintenance agreements. I want to explain this a little bit to you before, when we left the performance surety part and we were, we immediately went into the road acceptance, and then they did a two-year maintenance bond. We're actually following the Unified Development Ordinance on this now that we're taking over highway engineering. This is a three-year warranty period on this. We're not, I mean, we're agreeing to do small maintenance on the roads, such as plowing the roads and stuff like that. They're giving us a performance guarantee that's based 20% off of the construction cost, the entire construction costs for this. So this is a warranty period. We can do either three years or five years. Five years automatically if it's a bridge, five years if we see that they have missed our inspection schedules and stuff like that. On these, both of these developments here, you're seeing Cherry Hills first and then St. Andrews, we're doing three-year warranty period. They have this on this. At the end of the three-year period, we're gonna re-inspect all the infrastructure to make sure it has performed like our plans and engineering reports on this, and then we will move into the acceptance on this. In this time, the developer is totally responsible for any repairs or maintenance on this. When we get to the three-year period at the end, we go out there and we see some cracking in the asphalt, like cracking and stuff like that, part of the requirement is, is they're gonna have to go out and do all the crack sealing on this, too, to make sure that we get a good quality road and we get good quality infrastructure on that. Mike has sent down the engineering reports to you all on this. He has coordinated all the inspections of the infrastructure on that, so with this, I mean, we're recommending the acceptance of the letter of credit from Demont State Bank for the maintenance agreement at Cherry Hill, and also from, for maintenance agreement for St. Andrews subdivision for First Merchants Bank. If you have any questions, we'll be more than happy to answer them.
Good to meet you. Motion to approve. Can I do them together, or do I need to separate them?
We probably need to do them.
Do them separate. And the first one for Cherry Hill is the maintenance letter of credit is $109,278.48. And that was issued by the owner, Demont State Bank.
What's in the maintenance agreement? I just wanted to read this, this, particulars.
Yes, so it is essentially a legal representation by the owner of the development, that they will be responsible for repair, reconstruction of any defective infrastructure during that three-year warranty period. So this preliminary acceptance by the commissioners here this morning will start that three-year warranty period, and then any defective infrastructure, for any reason during that three-year period is on, is on the developer, the owner, for repairing, reconstructing, doing what's needed to fix that infrastructure.
And our backup is the letter of credit.
And then the letter of credits act as financial guarantee.
Right, guarantee, right.
And if they do not do that, with, after receiving notice from the county, that we can present that letter of credit and draw upon and do what's necessary to correct any problems out there.
And to be clear, during this three-year maintenance, we're plowing.
That's correct.
Yeah, that's where I was going with it.
Want to be clear.
That's correct.
We're plowing.
All right. We had a little confusion out there.
Reiterate my motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and second to approve Engineers Report Letter Credit from Demont State Bank, Maintenance Agreement for Cherry Hill Subdivision. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next up is the same thing for St. Andrews. You need to give us, it's just the same thing?
Same thing. The only thing I'd note is that the bank in this case, First Merchants Bank, has issued a clean letter of credit, so we attached a maintenance agreement just between the owner and the county for St. Andrews, so it's not all locked up in just one letter of credit. There's actually two instruments there. So that's the only thing I would note here on St. Andrews.
So the letter of credit is for $84,942?
That's correct. That's correct. Yeah. The other note, too, on this, this is in Damon Run Conservancy District on this. We did inspect all of the drainage on this. On that, however, Damon Run has submitted a letter accepting all of the drainage facilities within their system, since they are charged with it. Mike did note in the engineering report that we do have some questions and there is some items that we feel that are not sufficient, but Damon Run has accepted them, and they're the ones responsible for the maintenance of the drainage facilities.
So this is for roads only?
Yes, right-of-way roads only.
Right. Right, yeah, okay.
But just for the clarity of the record.
Yes, let's be explicitly clear that stormwater infrastructure, and especially that stormwater infrastructure outside of the right-of-way, is not being accepted by the county, and there's still outstanding issues that we identified during our inspections on that infrastructure.
Motion to approve. Do we know that?
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve an Engineers Report Letter Credit for First Merchants Bank, Maintenance Agreement for St. Andrews Subdivision. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Nick Rudolph.
One more.
We've got one last thing here. We have operational community schools, Jessica Coral, Flint Lake art teacher, a request to approve the usage of the administration building for spring into arts, which will be a student art exhibit for public display held April 21st through May 20th, 2018. Setup would take place Thursday, April 19th, and take down Monday, 20, and take down Monday, May 21st. She would also like to hold a kickoff on Saturday, April 21st, which would take place from 11:00 to 2, 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM, along with permissioning banners outside the admin building. Matt Steckley, Facilities Director, has been notified of this request.
What's the front gonna be at that point?
Yeah, I, that's in April.